Dan, join me. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys all for helping us here. I'm gonna bring up Jan Jordan.
Hi, I'm Jan Ternikin and I'm a volunteer here for the El Garsis. And we welcome you to our beautiful historic building here. The building is offered for rent and then we also do tours in conjunction with the museum that will be opening shortly after Labor Day. So again, we invite you to enjoy our park, the beautiful El Garsis. And then from the first of June till the end of August, we will have 1,100 people come here and enjoy the building. We have major tours set up in the fall. The 44th Mojave Desert Rendezvous is coming in. This will be their first time to come into Needles and enjoy it. We actually are booked out through next June for rentals. So again, we invite you to enjoy Needles and late Needles your destination. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Real quickly, I didn't introduce myself. My name is Kathleen Brennan and I am the president of Teamsters Local 1932 and a proud county San Bernardino employee for the last 15 years as well. And the reason we're here, and if you guys have all picked up this flyer, is when we affiliated back in 2015, the mission of the Teamsters and our organization was to transform the Inland Empire. And you guys are part of the Inland Empire. Other people don't feel that way or not, we feel that way. And lifting up the economic and, you know, social welfare of our members impacts you guys as well. And when you guys thrive, we thrive. And it's always been the mission of our organization. Of course, our members live here and yes, we are concerned with that, but we are also concerned with your lifestyles. My father last summer had a heart attack and had he lived out here, I don't know if he would have survived. Because I know that you guys don't have the proper medical facilities and access to hospitals and things of that nature. I don't understand that because you guys are all part of this amazing county and we should have those services. We should have those, you know, readily available. So meetings like this, the reason we're doing this is we're asking you guys what your needs are, what your, you know, what issues you guys see, so we can start that dialogue with the powers that be to try and help resolve some of those issues for you guys and help work with you guys and we want to partner with you guys to solve those issues. And it's not just because our members live here and work here. We want, you know, we want you guys all to thrive. When you thrive, again, we all thrive. So we hope that you guys will listen to what we have to say, that you guys will want to partner with us to make, you know, help lift up this area and just do some amazing things because it's possible. And if you guys knew where we came from 2015 as county employees and where we are today, it has been just absolutely drastic. Our healthcare, we've got affordable healthcare for the first time in 20 years. We have a pathway to medical retirement, first time in 30 years. It's possible. So, and I just want you guys to know that because I know when we started, I thought, I don't know if any of this stuff is going to be possible, but it is. Working together is the only way to get that done. So I hope you guys believe from that, you guys read the flyer, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. And with that, I'm gonna head it over to our principal officer, the man who has the vision for all of this. He has the vision for our organization when we affiliated and he has the same vision for this area. So with that, Randy Corrigan.
I don't think I need a mic. So thank you Kathleen, I appreciate it. Jan, thank you for the introduction and welcome. My name is Randy Corrigan. I am the principal officer of Teamsters Local 1932. I've been involved in the union movement since I was 21 years old. Been in just about every job, working a doc, I was a lumber on the thing, if you know what a lumber was back in the day when I was a teenager in high school. That's how we earned a little bit extra money on the side, helped pay the bills in the house. And one of the things I found in the labor movement is that, you know, we're just a bunch of working people coming together trying to solve problems. Just a bunch of working people coming together trying to solve problems. And we get criticized and demonized and villainized, usually because of someone else's self-interest. But when you look over the last 100 years, workers have only thrived in situations where unions and workers coming together have asked for a fair shake and where there's some balance at the table. And that comes with having a good integrated conversation and discussion with your community, making sure that as we live and work together, that we communicate with one another and we fully understand the needs and the shared needs and we compromise from time to time. It's not all my way, it's not always your way. It's a matter of just trying to figure out where those common areas are, building the right partnerships, that we can solve real problems. Unfortunately, I think today's political climate puts us in a situation where we're kind of too busy yelling at each other and being mad at each other versus sitting down and just trying to find solutions. And, you know, I love the desert. I've been coming out here since I was 19 years old. I rolled up to a car show when I was a kid and looked at the water and went, who's been hiding this for me? I grew up in Fontana, I don't know if anybody knows where that's at. I said, who's been hiding this, this cool thing? And I've been coming ever since. I've got a place in Parker. My wife and our family, in fact, all my kids are here from all over the place. Right now, we're trying to get together for the first time. We use this as a place to get together and get away and break from life, the hustle and bustle of the big city. And there's a lot of great things that happen out here. We also represent all the city employees that, here in the city of Needles. And we represent all the county employees that operate here in San Bernardino County out in the area. In addition to a lot of your railroad workers or Teamsters, there's a lot of other Teamsters living in the area. And what we've found by knocking on doors here recently is there's a whole bunch of retirees out here too, right? A lot of retirees, not only that retired as Teamsters, but retired as other unions as well. And it's one of the things that we see now in 2020 is not very many people have retirement vehicles or a system to catch them when they get to that age. Unfortunately, a lot of private sector employers have gutted out that pathway. And that's not good for an aging population. And, you know, unfortunately, maybe other generations took it for granted. The reason I'm talking about all this stuff is fortunately for me, I was young enough when I started in this movement, that the older individuals, probably my age now when I started, I thought they were old, that they sat me down and said, Randy, don't you ever give up our retiree healthcare? Don't you ever erode our retirement plan and our pension? I was like 18 years old. I was saying, I can make a few bucks, pay the bills. And they really indoctrinated me and did a really good job of making sure that all of us that were young coming in the door, that we understood the value of the future, that we understood we are going to get old quick. It's going to come on us and we're going to wake up one day, we're going to be 50 years old and go, man, I still think I'm 22 or 25. And they did a really good job of making me realize as an individual that this stuff's gonna, this is gonna happen fast to us. And we have to plan it, we gotta think about it, and we gotta, we gotta work together and we gotta, we gotta be all, try to be on the same page as much as we can. And what those values did is they moved me into a movement that does this type of stuff. And I've been fortunate enough to work with tens of thousands of workers in the last 30 years and help, help workers move to a better place. And I know some people say, I'm not a working person anymore. Well, unless you're a billionaire or a millionaire, multimillionaire, we're all working people. And we're all struggling typically to figure out some of the situations that are impacting us. Whether we're a small business owner, or we're working for the city, or, you know, we're a laborer, we're hitting the street, or we're a janitor, or we're a nurse, doesn't matter. We can be a clerk at the store, we're all working people. We have to respect the value of one another's work, not devalue their work. We have to appreciate one another for the work, which they do. Because the joke I like to tell, at least in my circles, is one of the most important people in the building that I run back in San Bernardino is our janitor. There's times when it's a bad day for you, whether the janitor did their job, boy, you get there, thank you very much for doing a great job today. Because it would have, you know, if I don't appreciate everybody at every level of the organization, in a very difficult time, you're going to be missing something that's very important. Now, you know, obviously, I'm trying to make fun of the, of a situation that is very important. And I don't mean that in a negative way. I mean it, we truly have to value what people do each day when it comes to their work. And we should no longer look down on them. And that's why we're doing this. We, case in hand, six, we knocked on almost 1,600 doors throughout this. We knocked on every single residential alley in this area. The reason why we did it, I see someone shaking their head, we didn't.
Not on my side, it's hell.
We knocked on your door. Where are you living? We knocked, we knocked, we knocked in those areas. If it's within the city of Needles, we mapped the entire city out. I'm not gonna argue with you guys. We saw everybody, we walked everybody around and we knocked on everybody's door. So maybe we didn't catch everybody. We're sorry if we didn't catch you. We would love to have caught everybody, but it's kind of impossible to catch every single person. What's that? We sure did. You remember that bus? What's that?
The ring doorbell didn't find you.
You know, we tried to knock on every single door, at least it was on our maps and, you know, maybe there was reasons why we missed a door here or there. Obviously, I'm not trying to mislead anybody. I know, I know we walked every single neighborhood. And, and we attempted to knock on your door. I'm not sure why that didn't happen. We're sorry, but we knocked on 1,600, almost 1,600 doors. And what we found by knocking on those doors and we had a conversation with people, we just got them on the doorstep and just asked them a few questions, like, what, what's going on in the city of Needles? You know, there's a couple industries that are coming to town. What's, what's your history here? We just kind of had dialogue. In today's day, there's a lot of, I guess, interests that want us not to talk to one another, or want us not to have good shared conversations. And what we have found, at least what I've found over my career, is listening to people and having good dialogue, you're going to extract the issues that maybe you two could work together on resolving. But it starts with having a conversation. So we started by knocking on the doors. And many of the things that we found were a bit, a bit tough to hear. And I want to first say that this meeting is not a meeting to beat upon the city of Needles. This is not a, we didn't host this meeting for a bunch of people to come in here and say, well, I don't like this person and I don't like the mayor and I don't like this city council person. This is not a meeting of criticism in a sense of that we're here to treat the city as if they're a country back. That is not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is to, is to identify solutions from the issues in which we extracted from those doors. And then when we went out and we've talked to these, these small businesses over the last few years, many of you see our Teamster Advantage network, we have more than 1,000 small businesses through the Inland Empire partner in a small business program that we don't charge a small business anything. We just, we advertise. The only thing we ask the small business to do is if you want to be part of our network, just offer up some sort of discount, whatever discount you think you can afford, we'll advertise it for you and we'll advertise it to our 35,000 members that are in the system and their family members that are part of that system. And we're going to encourage them to shop with you because we want tax dollars to stay locally. We want small business to be propped up and we want, as a matter of fact, you see a lot of them here, or some of them here on the slideshow. Building those partnerships and having those conversations, we start to identify what's happening in a particular area and then we just start to talk about how to present those solutions. So what were the things that came up? The first thing was there's no grocery store. I mean, obviously, everybody knows there's not a grocery store in this. And that was the number one issue that people complained about is there's no grocery store in the city of Needles. And at the time, when we were door knocking, there was somebody who was looking at opening a grocery store in Needles and, from what I understand, that has fallen apart since. So that's not gonna happen now. So we'll talk about that in a little bit, we'll come circle back to it. And the second thing that came up was access to healthcare, was access to certain parts of healthcare that seemed to be too far removed, that I've gotta go to, I gotta go to San Bernardino, or I gotta go to Phoenix, or I gotta go to Bullhead, or I gotta go to, I gotta go to Vegas. That came up as the number two issue and it came up with some pretty tough stories to hear. In other words, challenges that you would think individuals shouldn't be facing. And some other issues that came up were entertainment for kids, things for the kids to do that, they didn't seem to be, at least the people we talked to, just because we talked to a bunch of people, doesn't mean it's all accurate. I'm only reporting to you what people were saying. That there's not enough outside activities for kids and for families to engage in or in and around Needles. I know that there are some, I don't think the point was that there are none, I think it wasn't, I think it was more that there wasn't enough of them. Those were the top three. There's another, a number of other issues that were there. The one that stuck out to us the most, that we got to work on right away, just to try to do the right thing, was the healthcare. And so today, we have, we have Anthem here. Anthem, you want to introduce yourself real quick?
Sure. My name is Peter Nelson. I have two awesome kind of beard today, related.
And then we have Blue Shield, Mark, you want to introduce yourself?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mark with you guys and I'm from California.
We ask for them to come, as well as I met with the county of San Bernardino, I believe we have a representative from Don Ralph's office here, correct? Introduce yourself.
Yeah. Good morning, my name is Steve Reyes. I'm the field representative for supervisor Don Ralph. Fortunately, you can be here today, but thanks for the introduction and I've totally invested in working with you folks.
The reason why I'm talking about the county with healthcare is because the county has a healthcare system. They have a county hospital. And my question, after talking to all of our canvassers, to the county, was why don't we have better county healthcare or access to healthcare from the county network in Needles? I understand, it looks like there's 25,000 people that live in Needles, but you all know that live here, you've got weekenders, you've got, you've got people that are traveling from out of town, you've got people that are, that are traveling to some part of Arizona and having to be stopping in here, you have people that are on the river all the time, people that are in the desert, you know, running their side by sides, your snowbirds. You know, the population in this area grows exponentially as a result of that draw that everybody wants to come to Needles for, or the greater area around here. And so you're not just servicing 5,000 people, you're actually, and quite frankly, if you just take it from a county perspective, I would assume a lot of the people that are going to Pirate's Cove and Park Mojave and all of this stuff that's right up and down the water right here are from Rancho Cucamonga, Chino, Fontana, San Bernardino, Hesperia. So they're actually San Bernardino County residents that happen to be just on the far side, hanging out and doing some activities on this other side of the county. And so it's not just like you're servicing other people from other parts of the state, which shouldn't matter, it's not supposed to matter, but let's get real specific as far as the demographic that's actually coming here and hanging out where the population's expanding. So why aren't we paying more attention to it? And so we're just starting to ask those questions. One of the things I asked Anthem and Blue Shield to do is let's do an evaluation on the area. Let's look at why there's not the oncologists and the primary care and the gynecologists and all of the primary care needs and obviously other care needs that should be connected to healthcare that are more accessible to those that are living and/or coming to this area and using it for whatever reasons that they're using it for, whether vacations, snow burning, whatever those, those things are. And what, what both Blue Shield and Anthem are seeing is, wow, it's pretty, there's not really enough considering what's going on here. Now, for those of you that are familiar with healthcare, for those of you that are not familiar with healthcare, the difference between California, Arizona, and Nevada is healthcare is separated by the states. It's actually regulated at the state level and there are very different rules for how healthcare operates between California, Arizona, and Nevada. Now, you guys happen to be right here, cuddled up right into the corner of that tri-state area, which obviously you hear, I'm talking about the tri-state area. And why is it becoming a challenge for access to healthcare in an area that, quite frankly, there's a pretty decent population size here? Part of it is because of those differences in the way the healthcare is managed from a regulatory standpoint between the three states. Okay, well, that's not the average person's fault, right? The average person is just, is just, you know, trying to do their job, trying to work every single day. And they gotta drive 150, 200 miles to go see a gynecologist, or go see a podiatrist, or, you know, any, and I'm not good with all the names of all the doctors, but, am I, am I doing okay? Pete's gonna grade me when this is all over. Yeah. So, so, you know, the reason why I'm talking about it is I think it's important for us to recognize that what we're trying to do as an organization is we're trying to push those resources and/or those institutions into a common space to solve the problems. It doesn't appear as if that's happened yet to this point. So let's use the county of San Bernardino as one example. They have a county hospital system. The purpose of a county hospital system is to give access, and this is the general purpose, not San Bernardino County, but the general purpose is to give access to care for those who otherwise don't have access to care, or that are remote. So why isn't there a county hospital, some sort of network set up here? Now, they subcontract out, which is another issue that we're gonna have, that we've started to discuss with the county, is why are we subcontracting that workout? It actually should be a county system. And we may not be able to solve that today, we may not be able to solve that in two or three years, but what's gonna be very important is that we at least have the dialogue in how we start to work the organizations and institutions in the right direction. What it sounds like it's happened to this point is there's just been a lot of finger pointing. So I think, I want to thank Blue Shield and Anthem for being here today because they, they're here to answer questions that those of you may have at the end of the meeting, not in the middle of the meeting. And they're working with us to come up with ideas that will think outside the box to help solve the access to care issue, not just on that level, but also in connection with the county hospital system. County hospital system will be separate in the sense that I gotta deal directly with the county. Look, the Teamsters aren't trying to roll in and say, oh, we're just gonna come fix all our problems. That is not the intention of today's meeting. The intention of today's meeting is to throw the ideas that at least we've, or excuse me, the issues in which we've seen so far, and then explain, well, this is what we've done so far to try to move this in the right direction, and then suggest, hey, what we think should come out of this is a coalition be formed, or some sort of organization be established here in Needles that has the primary function of solving these problems that the residents have, have brought forward. We will be a partner in it. We don't have to control it, we're not looking to control it. We want to be a partner in it. Because when we started to ask these questions on how these problems were getting solved, we weren't finding anybody that was solving them yet. And if we've missed them, great, let's, let's have the introduction, let's move them into that space where we're collectively solving problems so that we can move in the right direction versus another five years going by, another 10 years going by, and it's still not being taken care of. So hopefully by the end of this meeting, we'll, we'll come out of it with, you know, another date that's set for us to work towards establishing and finding out who in the room is willing to partner with, with, with one another to help establish that organization that starts to build, I said, I guess, a sense of urgency. The Jews housing, right? We saw that that was a need in the list of things, where somebody said, or multiple people said, housing in Needles versus, versus the workers and cannabis who are now starting to be hired in the expansion of that industry in the city of Needles, many of them are actually living in Arizona and driving over to California. And a lot of that has to do with just not enough housing being built in the area. So who, what's that? Affordable housing, absolutely. So, and what does affordable housing mean? Because then, then you have to argue and discuss, well, whether or not the people that are working in cannabis, what is affordable to them? In other words, are the cannabis companies paying them? Correct. Are they being a good citizen to the community? Because I don't see the cannabis operations setting up on the Arizona side in certain situations. What's that? What's that?
The pay of the cannabis to the community is more about who you're allowed working up in those places, other than citizens or certain ones, be involved into the community and get up into the, but get the opportunity to serve the community. What I'm trying to say is, you guys said, we worry about the pay, because I paid rent here, I've been in Needles for 17 years. And it's always been hard to find a job, but when the cannabis comes in town, it's been easier for a lot of people for pay rent. In Dallas, only you survive for one, one rate, you earn the pay rate one time, but then you got to worry about rent, traffic, you gotta worry about gas, take care of your kids, but Dallas, it's a divide under that. But for right now, most cannabis is providing that for some of us locals here in town.
That's good. I mean, you know, I guess, some people would say that, and some people would say that it's not that. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is that cannabis is operating in California because it's been legalized at a certain level that's not legalized in Arizona. Is that correct?
Well, yes, but when you come to the housing side, the housing in Arizona is cheaper than the housing here in Needles. Just overall, cost of living is cheaper over in Arizona. So you have businesses like me here, but your actual cost of living is higher here just because you're coming from a state farm.
So, so, so what can we do to discuss, or at least create energy around trying to solve, start to solve those problems?
The problem in Needles is that housing does not exist.
That's right.
Okay? No matter where you live, no matter where you work, no matter what you do for a living, whether you make $5 an hour or you make $350 an hour, the housing does not exist, period. There are no apartments, there are no houses, there's very little for sale. There's no new building that's been done since 2020 to have massive, like, the Vista, Casa Linda was the last major, and down by the golf course, the Rio, Marina Vista area and behind the golf course, the little, little houses. Those are the last things that happened in this town. So there are no places. So the people are coming here to take the jobs that we have, 500 new jobs that already were created. We have 500 to maybe 1,000 more coming in, the new places opening up. Where are they going to live? They cannot live in Needles because there's nowhere for them to live. It just isn't here.
Thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, you have a candidate for mayor here, a queen of all, and you have a candidate for city council. I hope that the Teamsters, when there was an opportunity to address some of those issues, with going to housing and jobs.
So when we have a candidate for him at a later date, we will definitely do that. I think that today's not a candidate forum.
Well, if I can speak on housing, as running around collecting signatures and thank you very much, there's plenty of housing, it's just slums, there's a lot of garbage. And, and a housing authority is a government entity, and I'm telling you, that's low income. Anything that's raggedy and people is living in is low income as far as I'm concerned. We only 5,000 people here. We should be able to be happy and help each other. And that, and that way we'll get the job done. We need to stay a small town and help ourselves before we can get anybody else.
Understood. I think that the point that was raised is there's not enough housing in Needles. I think the statistics show that there actually, there's not been enough new development and building of housing, whether it's apartments and/or homes or whatever sorts of communities need to be built, you know, 55 plus.
There's enough housing for the 5,000 people here in Needles. You just need to piece it up.
Well, I would agree with you. I mean, I think there's always room for improvement. The reason for me bringing it up is that if you have 1,000 new jobs come into an industry and there isn't housing actually here for individuals to reside in, to go to work in that industry, it creates an issue. So it's something that just needs to be dealt with, discussed, and we gotta start building the right coalitions to solve the problems. We can point the finger at lots of people today because the reality is there's certain things that just have not happened, for whatever reason.
The reality is, is there's apartments available, they're just not ready to move in because they're slum. And they simply need to be painted and fixed up so people can move in for a 200 And they simply need to be painted and fixed up so people can move in for at two hundred hours a month, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, being somebody, being somebody that grew up in some section eight homes myself, so let me, let me respond to what you said. Michael, hold on, hold on, please, 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 just let me, let me, let me explain something. I'm aware of what, uh, shabby housing is, from growing up. So I understand what that means. And I understand that you can't just sometimes slap paint on something, and it's gonna fix the conditions of that apartment complex, that complex, whatever, let, let me, can I finish?
Let me say this, the people who are already living in these housing authorities are living in those same conditions. And they're very upset, they're very angry, and it's not necessary to live that way, where they just simply need a pet, uh, a, a paint job, maybe a dog or a cat, get your butts, rats and roaches out of there. This, we're, uh, less than five thousand people here, and the two thousand, just, just, the two thousand, uh...
So who owns the problem?
The two thousand people in high bracket income, uh, youth, uh, health, and, uh, uh, housing and schools, these people are holding it down, this is a function of living community. But there's about thirty-four percent of the people in low-income housing. And all of those houses around here just need to be fixed, you understand, and painted, and your people can move in. There's enough housing for five thousand people here in Needles, we just need to help each other. And the only way to do this...
We're gonna do this.
What he's saying is we need additional housing for the people that are coming in. So not just the five thousand that are here, but also the thousand that are coming in for another...
If, if you got people, Needles is thirty, thirty square miles long, they don't even have a supermarket. And those people who come in, it's, 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 they're gonna spend all their money, they're gonna spend all their money in here.
So let's do this. Let's do this, please.
And they should own it, so the people can own it, and all those proceeds will go to the people in Needles.
Could we discuss that some other time?
So let's do this.
Let's continue with it.
I think that the issues, I think that the issues that you raised have clearly got a lot of validity to them. I don't think anybody here is dismissing those issues, nor are we dismissing the issue about the fact that we need more housing in, in itself. So not only is there more housing that's needed for the incoming jobs and the jobs that have been growing here recently, but there also needs to be a discussion as part of that coalition and that partnership to deal with the challenges in which you just referred to. Because I'm assuming there are people who own those homes, I'm assuming, excuse me, own those apartment complexes, and there are people that may be able to be held accountable as a result of whatever those conditions are. Those probably need to be addressed in a separate meeting from this, in a sense.
Hey, look here in Needles, if we help each other, these can be, you know, consecutive home. For all these, it's got two hundred and fifty charter cities. Needles is a charter city, they write their own rules and regulations. We need to help each other here in Needles, let me get it out there.
We need to...
Sometimes, 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 sometimes people can't get their voice out, when people like you have not here in this town.
Let me go do my act.
So... Actually, I think it's really important for you to repeat what you said, so everybody can hear.
Sometimes it's hard, I understand what she's going on for, but sometimes it's hard to get our voice out when people like you are not taking interest to come in this town.
Understood. And when you say people like me, what does that mean?
That mean you giving me an opportunity to express my voice. I went to a couple places, I'm not, like I said, I love this town. But I get, I get a, I get a, I get a, a big stamp that says, "Don't mess with me." But I got credentials and I'm built, I'm handed out food with this gentleman, I'm, I'm volunteering my time around this whole community, but when I get to a certain level, I have a certain group that says, "So now when you come into town, we get to express it with them, and speak out, and let them know." But like, just, but just going off the subject, and I don't wanna go off the subject, like I said, I got a little data here myself that I'm just here to listen.
What, what data would you like to share? It's a gamble.
Oh, just move on, shit took off.
Okay. All in favor of moving on, signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Any opposed? Thank you very much, so, so, look, we, we have to respect and listen to other people's appointing views, and I know sometimes we may not like how they deliver it, or we don't wanna hear it. Um, I appreciate the respectful manner in which you rose up and explained it. So let's try to move through the issues. Those issues that I laid out, grocery store, affordable housing, excuse me, grocery store, access to healthcare and, and affordable housing are clearly at the front of trying to resolve the major issues in which, the doors in which we knocked on came out, uh, as far as concerns, uh, for, for the area. And so I guess my question is, how many of you are willing to participate in forming some sort of organization that, that is owned by themselves, by you, by those of you, I don't live in Needles, I have an interest here because we represent lots and lots of people that live and work in the area. And the complaints in which we receive from the members we represent, in addition to the areas in which they work, we're just trying to address them as an organization, because that's what my organization has done for over one hundred years. Is, we've typically been on the right side of these things, and we just try to get involved in the community, coalesce them into a direction that will bring positive change, iron out differences, and just start to chip away at resolving problems. And so, how many of you in this room are willing to participate in that process? For those of you that are not willing to participate in that process, can I ask you why you don't wanna escape that process? Anybody wanna speak to that? The time is now.
Well, I think we need to know what you're talking about, how, you know, it's, it's easy to say yes, but let's put in, let's put in a...
I don't know what how is yet, because that's, that's the purpose we're having the meeting. The purpose we're having the meeting is, what does the group think is the right next step? It's not what I think is the right next step, it's what the group thinks is the right next step. You all live and work in this community, and I'm assuming you love it just as much as we do, if not more. And if that's the case, then what is it that you think needs to come out of that? Now, you may have an individual issue or fight that you wanna plug in, but we're also gonna have to compromise on certain things for us to build partnerships with others, to be able to get many of the things done. And that doesn't mean we can get them all done. I just know that over a long period of time, every time we host something like this, that we can look back two, three, five years later, and we can see progress that comes out of it, because we at least injected the conversation. And, and again, it doesn't have to be that the Teamsters did it in the end. We're just a partner in that coalition. So I'll ask a question again, for those of you, because the, the reason I ask is, when we knock on the doors, one of the things that we heard from a lot of people that we knock on the doors was very tough for our canvassers to hear. And that was, well, it's just the way it is, no one cares around here. That was, that was tough for our canvassers to hear that coming from some people, yes?
So are we talking about putting a committee together, like, maybe through the chamber or some other venue? Or the town can be involved in the changes and try to facilitate some of these things?
Yeah, and I would say that, yes, with one, the exception is not through the chamber. In other words, it should be its own standalone organization that, that coalesces and identifies the pillars. You know, first of all, I think what you do here, and again, these are just suggestions, it doesn't mean we have to do this. We have to identify the pillars of, uh, and platforms of what that organization's gonna stand for. You know, is it helping bring a grocery store? Is it, along with that, finding better access to healthcare, and then helping solve the affordable healthcare, excuse me, affordable housing issue? If it's just those three and it starts with those three, the problem you run into is if you have twenty-five competing issues, it probably becomes a bit cumbersome. But in my experience, tackling those three is a darn good start to a coalition. It shouldn't go through the chamber, it shouldn't go through us, it shouldn't go through the city itself. It should become its own standalone organization that meets on a regular basis. And, you know, we sometimes argue about how those solutions are. We've committed, obviously, to helping create this, because when we go back and look at time over the last hundred and fifty years, we can say, see that these discussions is what is always the start of good change. And that, in the end, when you see change has come to fruition, it has been because it started in this context. So we're just trying to thrust this into a beginning, and we'll be that partner with you. Hopefully that answers your question. Does it answer your question?
Sure.
Great. Don't think it should be anchored with the chamber, it's no, obviously shot at the chamber, we're, we're in the Chamber of Commerce here, we're in actually twenty-three chambers, uh, throughout the inland empire, we participate heavily in chambers, because we believe it's really important for the chamber to understand the perspective of working people. On top of it, we don't think that the city itself should anchor it, because we don't want it to get caught up in, you know, sometimes what that creates, it's no shot, we, we represent all the city employees and we value the work that they do. As a matter of fact, I actually want a couple individuals to speak for here, uh, speak here for a minute to talk about the work in which some of the people that work in this area do on a daily basis. In our current culture, it's unfortunate that, 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 I'll say, let's say a city worker, or a county worker, or a state worker, "Oh, they're, I hear this, oh, they're lazy, they don't do this, they don't do that, you know, the potholes don't get fixed, dah dah dah." The reality is, in this area, is this isn't, city, for a very long time, a under-resourced area. Period. I don't think anybody here is gonna disagree with that. I think that it's agreed that this, the area around Needles has been an under-resourced area. So then when someone's driving down the road and they hit a pothole, "Oh, man, that city ain't doing anything to help out," right? Well, the, the, no one reports that, that, that individuals working in the streets have been, every single day, working their rear end off, like, just this last couple days when the storms came through, clearing, clearing out the, the floodwaters, clearing out the dirt, clearing out, uh, you know, all the gravel and everything that rolls over the roads. And that they, you know, they fill potholes. And instead, what happens is we get caught up in this being mad that they hit the pothole, versus recognizing that they may have fixed twenty potholes that day, all over town, or all over the area. So we have to put the, put the conversation in the right space versus it just being criticism. And I think that forming a coalition, again, it's just my idea, it doesn't have to. Look, we can conclude this meeting, you guys can tell me we're, like, crazy, and, and this is, this has no value to it, and, you know, we'll just go about doing what we normally do, and we'll find another area that's, that's willing to kind of invest in themselves and create this sort of energy to start to bring those right stakeholders together. I will say this, even though this is an under-resourced area, I personally believe that a lot of people have benefited from it being that way. I think over the next few years, that's gonna get exposed. And I, as an individual, I'm always disappointed when I see some people that are willing to hold others down for their own individual benefit. There's some of that that's gone on here. I am familiar with the area, and I'm obviously familiar with some of the history, I'm not an historian around here. But if you look at what created this city, and what you have happening around here, and the potential for revenue sources, why aren't we tapping in those in a very robust way? Yes?
We're on the side of the river.
Right. We can't change that.
Well, you know what? We've been in San Bernardino County for a very long time. We have been in the state of California for even longer. Where have you guys been? I mean, you personally, you're not over there, where, where San Bernardino County been? We are a railroad town, we were founded in eighteen eighty-three, and that railroad is still running pretty good. We have had Gomach help from San Bernardino County. I don't know where the Teamsters have been in all the years. All of a sudden, because we have cannabis, now you're interested in us. The people, a lot, choose not to live in Needles because of California, not because of no housing. They choose to go over to the other side. That did not happen, since you're not a historian, until they built this bridge over here in about nineteen seventy-eight. Until then, you could not get across this river except on a one-way bridge that you needed permission. And there was nothing over there. Otherwise, you'd have to cross a tow block. And after nineteen fifty, you could cross up at Davis Dam. Now you've got a bridge, not Laughlin, you've got a bridge at the, uh, we have our bridge. I often say, when they built that bridge, Needles is like a great big coffee shop. And a lot of the coffee ran across the river, and a lot of the grounds stayed here. We have good people here. My husband and I were raised here, my husband's bad as mayor here, we've got real deep roots. We left for twenty years, and by choice, by choice, we could've lived anywhere. We chose to come back to our hometown, because it's not the town it was in the fifties. You're right, there has been somewhat of a holdback. My father-in-law wanted us to grow in nineteen fifty-one, we didn't want that to happen, they impeached us. This is the way it's handled. Now, because we have, it's not an all-day trip to go somewhere, you know, people can live other places. They choose to live in Hattasoo. Why do they live in Hattasoo? Well, look at it, it's got a lot more of everything, including your medical, which, unless you're low-income and having to be on the county programs, you go to Hattasoo, you go to Kingdale, you go to Valley View, you go to Bullwood. Now, it's hard, it's horrible for the people that are on low-income to come here look for services. Why does San Bernardino County send them out here? They are sending them to a very difficult position to live. They're not doing them any favors, they can't afford the housing, there's not even a dentist for their kids. You know, why does San Bernardino continue to wanna push them out here? They won't let them go across the river for services. Now, you think the Teamsters is gonna change that? I don't think so. We're still in California, we're still at the far end of San Bernardino County, and we have been in Oregon. And we've tried to get a car down from the state of California, which was denied at least twice. You're coming here telling stuff that is not a reality. And as far as the cannabis workers, those companies should've thought of that, and you didn't ask a rhetorical question, "Well, why do they go across the river?" Well, because they have to grow it here to sell it in California, that's your answer, right? They came here for the water, they came here for the power, they didn't think about these other things. They are putting people in a terrible position by saying...
Who's next?
The county. The county is paying the people extra to send them out here, and we've seen it since in the nineteen seventies.
What do you mean, the county's paying people, what do you mean?
They, they give them, uh, whatever money, however the money works. They give them a little bit of an extra.
Are they on remote incentive bonus, or about to refer to...
I, I don't know what it's called, uh, but if, when they can't even go to grocery store here...
Wait on, hold on.
Uh, you know, you, you can't go to the grocery store here, how do people that don't have a car, or it's difficult now? Or they're supposed to pay seven dollars a gallon for gas in Needles when they go across and pay four dollars? How are they supposed to go to grocery store? You know, we don't have, you're not gonna change where Needles is. Needles is always gonna be at the far end of San Bernardino County unless we split. They're always gonna be in the state of California, which is our biggest problem. Try to build a house in there. I have two houses going across the street from here right now. One of them is a five thousand square foot home, it's huge, it is in the millions. And he's gonna build another one right next to it. Most people can't do that. You know, so, to get his workers, they're all out of Sealy Valley area. To get the wood, it came from Valencia. To get the drywall, it came on a flatbed out of Las Vegas. To get a contractor here, you can't get workers, oh, you know, it's California, you know, register. A contractor is difficult, the guys across the river won't come over here, it costs too much. The guys from Hattasoo, I had to get him pride wine for a guy who'd come from Hattasoo to put up roll-up blinds on my patio, because it's California. The market you just mentioned supposedly is because their vendors would not come to California. Your problem is California and our location.
So before we move to the next one, I just gotta respond to a couple things. Um, this isn't an argument.
It's fine, you can bring it. I've been here a lot longer than you, and I know what our situation is, and I look around, there's other people here that have been here. Uh, maybe, we, we've broken up a little bit with being gone and coming back, but you've got some people that know what's going on here.
Whether you believe it or not, I'm here to help, like, literally. And, and if, what's that?
So is the government.
Okay, look, you pointed out some things that you're correct are not gonna change, and I didn't propose in any sense of the means that we're gonna break it off in California, didn't propose that, you know, we change this, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to it, I believe you. I just, I gotta... I just, I gotta refer to a couple things. You said, "My medical, dah dah dah, this and that." This isn't about us right now. We're doing this because we see a need in the community.
Period.
Period. So I would ask everybody, you know, obviously people are free to say it and interpret it the way they want, like, we've been dealing with challenges that working people have in communities for over one hundred years. It'd be very hard to find any organization that's been around as long as we have that has literally at every step of the way has been in this space to help solve these problems. And all we're trying to do is bring that sort of expertise, or knowledge, or experience, and say, "You're right, these are some difficult circumstances. So let's get them on the table, and let's start to talk through potential solutions for them." Because whatever issues are higher cost in California versus Arizona, because I too have property in Arizona and in California, and I know the differences between the two, and I also know that there are things that are more expensive in Arizona than they are in California. No, for a fact. I also know that sometimes the misnomer of "you can't do anything in California" because of whatever those things are, sometimes can be worked through, sometimes it can't, because the same holds true on the Arizona side for certain issues. Every state, every city, every county has its challenges. That's not gonna change as far as what state, what county, and what city you're in. No one here is proposing any of that, and on the healthcare side of it, there is actually a way, in my mind, seeing that we've been dealing with it as an organization for over a hundred years, to take the same money, use it a little bit more wisely in a healthcare system that actually treats people better. That's been our red and butter for a very long time. So when that pops out as an issue, and our members are clearly in the community, it becomes a win-win-win, because now we need to deal with it not just for our members from a very self-serving perspective, but also for the residents that are anchored in the area. So it's not me, it's us. And I just, I just wanna clarify that, because what I don't wanna have is a tone that we're trying to bring some, you know, big-city idea that works. These things that we're doing have worked all over North America in the last hundred years, whether it's a small town, big town, or medium town. I'd like to move on to the...
Can I just ask you one question?
Sure.
Can you tell me one place in America that the Teamsters have ever worked with that is in the unique situation that we are, in a tri-state area, that you've got one of the highest-to-live-in states, which we happen to be in, versus in Arizona and in Nevada, that we are in such close contact here? We rely on them, they do not rely on us for anything, basically, except to move the trains to give the goods here. There's nobody really, it comes from across the river, or from Laughlin, to shop in Needles. We have to go to them. All of this stuff that you're talking about, Needles is a unique place, and you're so right on what you said about our snowbirds, our river people, our part-time people. Stores will not look at that, we have to have ten thousand people, or whatever the figure is. They will not look at us, because they will go across the river, less California regulations, and less hassle.
So in a remote part of Michigan, similar problem, not having a grocery store. Area came up with a solution for the grocery store. Very similar problem, because the area said, "There's a higher demand to have a grocery store for just the quality of life of people living in the area." And they built a system to deal with pulling in a grocery store that was very unorthodox to the normal system, for the exact reason in which you're facing right here.
One state you're dealing with. That situation, you are dealing with one state in Michigan, you are dealing with three states here.
So, real quick, you ask me a question, I'm answering the question. I'm only using an example of a challenge that happened on the grocery store issue. In Michigan, there's examples in Alabama, there's examples in Idaho, there's actually examples in other parts of the country. What I don't wanna do is get into back and forth, where it's like, "Oh, well I say this, and you say that." That is not what I'm trying to do at all, and I'm not trying to be right. I'm only trying to say, "Hey, look, there are remote area struggles that have happened in other parts of the country, and maybe their resolution doesn't fix it here, but at least gives us ideas for solutions." Because if nobody...
No, because you're dealing, you're getting off the subject that is our problem. Our problem is we are a tri-state area, and the two other states that we are next to don't have the same problems California. You're talking about Alabama, you're talking about Michigan, you're not that store in Michigan that you're talking about.
But Alabama's got states that are around it, and the cities I'm referring to...
Not where you're talking about. Not where you're talking about.
Actually, the area, the area I was gonna refer to actually has a tri-state issue. There are a lot, they don't have the exact same issues that Needles has. And this isn't about what the Teamsters did. That example isn't what we did, it's an example of what we see someone else did, and we're like, "That looks like a, that looks like a potential resolution." The point is, is that may not work. I think what's important is getting the people in the room, identifying the problems, and then saying, "Okay, let's try, let's try to pull back the layers on these four or five different potential solutions, so we can at least try to solve the problem." I agree that there are two other states in this situation, but look at Laughlin. I mean, are the jobs in Laughlin quality? No. I mean, you look at the jobs around here, and there are a lot of them aren't necessarily high-quality jobs. Now, there's a reason for that, that is, again, a whole nother, a whole nother medium that we need to get into. Or that we could get into.
Can I share something with you?
Sure.
I'm a resident, I've been out here for a while now, over seventeen years. Needles offered me a whole new person. So even though they pushed this out here to make me a better man, a better dad, a better visionary, and so... It's just a thing that hindered me, because I have a past, but Owen and a couple more people showed me how to be a better person, and be involved in the community with my kids and stuff like that. A couple people from right there show you that Needles do got a lot of offers, people here can help to bring the city back together, but we just gotta start communicating, talking with each other. Owen knows the capability of me, right Owen?
Right.
And I, I don't, I don't try to stand up and get a better boy, or just get, I don't notice, I just stand in the cut. If you ever see me, I'm tired, just stand out the way. But it's a lot of people here who, I appreciate you guys who started this here, because you give us a better chance to do this with our family.
Well, I, I agree that sending people out here that can find a job, and I've seen them before, I've seen other people in your situation, and it works. But there's a lot of people, it doesn't work, work when they're sent out here with health problems, and they can't get to the doctor except to drive to San Bernardino. And so what's our solution?
That's where we gotta work for.
I just wanted to say that if we have, my sister was in the hospital in Vegas and met one of the doctors, who's a surgeon up there, who was telling her about plans to bring a rotating medical facility into our city, and she is the head doctor up there at Sunrise in this program, and that she was looking forward to being part of this problem. And I think in answer to the original question on, you know, what, what do you mean, what you want us to do, what is it that you're asking, I think what's being asked here is if we can identify problems, are you willing to be part of the solution? Instead of being... Constantly saying what's wrong with our community is what is holding us back. What can we do? Go back to JFK, what, don't ask what you can do, your country can do for you, it's what can you do for your country? Aren't we willing to band together, put aside differences, stop fighting, stop being divided in any way, if there is that even existence, whatever it is that keeps you being with your fellow, can we work together on a project? We've gotten together with our community, with our city council, with cannabis companies, and cleaned up the beaches, and busted our butts to do it. We've gone out there, you know, we have people, our city council goes out and does cleanups in the city, you know, we do things like that. We have city council meetings, I would love to see this many people in a city council meeting, and talk to them. What do you want to see in our city? What's your vision? We'd like to hear that. We're not hearing it.
Can I talk about that real quick? Yeah, like, thank you so much for bringing that up, because one of the things that, you know, there's this, there's this saying that if you don't vote, you can't complain, right? But there's, there's another layer to it that I think that we have happening in America right now, which is the fact that the civic responsibility to everybody, people may wanna criticize their school board, they may wanna criticize their city, or criticize their county, or their state, but are people participating in that process and understanding the governance, understanding the process, understanding how it operates, and most importantly, adding input in the proper setting, in the proper place? Because that's where things get fixed. Instead, what's happened is, we've had a couple generations, this is statistically true, that have withdrawn from going to a city council meeting, that have withdrawn from doing these types of settings, that have withdrawn from being involved on a larger scale, and as a result, we're leaving decisions up to other people, and we're not even telling them in the proper form what the needs actually are. And so then we get mad, because it doesn't come our way in the right, in the right setting. And it really goes back to resetting what was just said, and just creating a little bit more involvement, and making sure that those lines of communication are over. Look, we're not trying to create a hostile environment, absolutely not. I am not trying to create arguments. I do know when we bring this discussion up, it's gonna have a natural kind of confrontation, conch-ation, confrontation sort of exchange, simply because some people are frustrated by the very obstacles, by, by other decision-makers, well, that doesn't, other than when you're in problem-solving, because when you're in problem-solving, you've got to recognize what they didn't do correctly, but don't spend too much time on it, and just get to making sure that we take the first step. The first step is actually us forming some, or you, forming some sort of organization that its accountability isn't to a city council. Its accountability isn't to a chamber, its accountability isn't to the Teamsters. It's, correct, it's to the community, it's to the collective group, which means we are gonna have to compromise on issues from time to time. That's something that our society has kind of grown away from, and it is creating larger divides and larger problems, because we don't wanna listen in respect to the other side of the argument. So what this will do is, it's gonna create some, you know, it's gonna create some differences. But will we approach it in a proper manner? Look, my goal is not to run for office, my goal is not to, I am not looking to seek some higher office of any sort. It's me hanging back to these communities that helped me when I was a kid, and I was in the time of me, because all, all of your county employees, and this, this is a true story, all of your county employees, whether they handle your Section 8, or they handle your, your welfare to work program, or food stamps, they carried my family when I was a kid, because if there wasn't them, and they weren't there, I wouldn't be here. And so now I'm fortunate enough to be in a position that I can bring my experience to help those very same people try to achieve affordable healthcare, try to lift up the community, because somebody did it before me, for me to, as a little kid, me and my brother, struggling to deal with whatever we had to deal with, for that infrastructure to be there, so we gotta get back into that sort of space. You have something?
Yeah, I just wanna say, there is a unique thing happening in Susanville, California. This is a city in California on the border of Nevada. Susanville, most of our residents live in Nevada because it's cheaper, and they work in Susanville. Susanville's very remote, because there's a state prison there. That state prison is so old and dilapidated, they wanna close it. One thousand state employees will lose their job directly from the prison, and a total of three thousand people who also supply the needs, facility, food, everything else that goes along with that prison will lose their jobs also. The union up there for the state has stepped in, sued the state, got injunctions to stop closing of that, and losing three thousand jobs. So we're not the only city who's having issues with states and with losing jobs, but also, they did form sort of a community involvement program under this, and they got the union to help them. So if you don't wanna be involved in it, can you at least make a phone call to a state or your representatives from the county? If you can write a letter or email, if you don't wanna be involved in it, you can at least make a phone call. I was always heard that in the dark of night, you barely see one candle, but if you see a hundred candles, it becomes a forest fire. If your county representative wants your phone call, he's not gonna do anything, but if he gets a hundred phone calls, then he's... And I said, yeah, we are a county representative area, because we work for the state, our equipment is over, we get a lot of hand-me-downs, one of the big cities, county, home state, we get stuff sent down to us high up in the state, Sacramento, and it's not the best stuff, but we make it work, same as the city. We don't have the best stuff, but we make it work. So with the issue of healthcare, yeah, it is an issue, because I have an HMO when I started with the state. Nobody can't have an HMO, nothing cared for me. I'm a state employee with decent benefits, and I can't even use up here in business. I have an HMO, and all my, all my services across the river. Well, too bad you don't have a PPO, you have an HMO. You gotta go all the way, gotta a hundred miles to try to get dental care, to try, and I have a decent level of good benefits, and it's like, no. So it's, it's the community come together, get this done, you gotta shut it down, so...
Yeah. So you have a unique situation, I think, what a fellow worker, a fellow people, we should probably do this at this point, is talk about the opportunities that we do have. Here, you have somebody who is in the healthcare field, and is a current council member, correct?
Correct.
And we've been talking to regularly about some of these challenges, and trying to figure out solutions. I don't know if you wanna say a few words on the subject, but you are a direct representative of the people in the city who elected you. You're an indirect representative in healthcare, because obviously you're a healthcare provider in a sense that you're in the field itself, and you see these sorts of challenges. What are your thoughts on what's going on? I'm, I guess, introduce yourself, so everyone knows who you are.
My name is Tana Bell, I'm with the Council of City Needles. Ellen also is here, also representing and speaking on behalf. First half, I wanna thank the Teamsters for putting this together.
You're a fun assistant.
Well, thanks to the Teamsters for putting this together. These are, these are where we had these difficult conversations, and start saying, "Hey, this is what my needs are, how can we make it better?" But if we, there's a reason why our front windshield is so much bigger than our rear view mirror, because we can't just keep looking back, we gotta keep looking forward. We gotta say, "What can we do to make this better? And how can we fix these problems that everybody is bringing up?" Like, come to our council meetings, bring these up, say, "Hey, I need this to make our life better, how can we help you?" We are seven people that sit up there that try to represent this entire town, but if we don't know the issue, we can't address that issue. So these are great meetings to start having, to start opening these dialogues, and say, "Hey, I don't, I need a grocery store, they brought up some..." Maybe a co-op, that's a great idea, let's start talking about these things. How can we, as our own team, our own people, start addressing, how do we get, we bring in a grocery store? Second, our healthcare, we've got Steve here from Dr. Bur, Ms. Marle's office. We have to start saying, "Hey, county, we need help, we can't survive out here, we need to figure out a way to get transportation, to get our citizens to get healthcare, two hundred and forty miles down that road. How do we get them down? Kids that fracture their arm, I also work at Colorado River Medical Center here in town. A great facility, but they have limited resources. How do we get that kid that broke his arm to see an orthopedic doctor down in San Bernardino County? Arrowhead is two hundred and forty miles away, without public transportation, this kid is not gonna get down there." And we're, we are not doing a service to our community by not having these resources. These are great things that we, I don't necessarily have the answer for, but let's talk about it, let's say, "How can we fix this?" We need to be able to say, "I don't necessarily agree with what you say, but hey, can I, can we talk about this and maybe make these suggestions to each other?" Great ideas, thoughts, I mean, we're not gonna agree with each other all the time, but we sure can have these talks and make sure that we start hearing each other out and saying, "If I can't do it, maybe we can call somebody else to help us out." Our next is our housing, and these are all three elements that I think council has identified as our top priorities, when we get a list of what is our priorities for this community. Housing also is a huge, I think we're talking to all locals, how can we build in these townhomes, what can we do to make it, anything to make small changes that we can continue to step forward, and sometimes we're gonna take a couple steps backward, but that's okay, because we're gonna continue to move forward. gonna continue to move forward. All of us here, our, our community members, we are, we have the best city in, in the world. I'm sorry, I love being here, I love raising my kids here, I love having my family here. If we need something, our city, our team comes together. Last night, what, they worked till midnight, working together to clean up our streets, to make our town better. That's, my job is to help make sure that they get the needs that they meet, and they provide them, provide us with the services to keep our town beautiful. Now we ask, hey, maybe we can get some better healthcare choices in the area? What can we do that you need, and it's your special circumstance? Teamsters is bringing us together to just open up this dialogue. It's not, this, I, I mean, this is, this is great, this is a beautiful opportunity for us to just get together and say, how can we help each other out? I mean, I appreciate you all bringing up these, this, these are, these are conversations that we might not have when we're playing ball with our kids together, and these are things that we all see each other out there, but not necessarily do we talk about, because we don't actually, you know, it's kind of, don't want to bring up anything and make anybody get mad or offended. So I appreciate you, thank you for getting us all together and opening up this dialogue, and I'd be happy to lead, join, work, and any kind of coalition that we need to do to continue moving us forward.
Reid?
Ah, man?
Yes. So, you know, a lot of you are aware of the water issue, and there was a lot of partnerships that went to try to resolve that issue, I figured you maybe could talk about that for us?
Yeah, I don't need that, I can talk about it.
Yeah, are you?
I can talk about it. Yeah, I'm, I'm here with the city, I'm proud to announce that we got over twenty-seven billion dollars in grant funding for the City of Needles. All that, fourteen million of it is for our water infrastructure. So that's fantastic. Of it, seventy-four million dollars will be spent to install a water treatment plant that will feed and treat three wells that will benefit generations to come. Uh, while that's great, that's not the, that's not the end, right? There's deteriorating mains, there's lateral holes that need to be changed, so we need to start getting Needles infrastructure issues out, uh, to our representatives, to get money from Sacktown down here, because we need more money, we need more help. So we are really proud of the work that we've done.
Yeah, and we've partnered with the city in a lot of cases, and a lot of areas across the country, uh, but specifically here, to help kind of bring those together and resolve those issues, because there's something that the entire population is challenging with here in the area.
Yeah, it's hard, you know, it's hard, and it, the saddest thing about everything is it took a disaster for our officials to realize, hey, Needles is there, and they need help. And that's, it was terrible that that kind of happened, uh, but it was probably the best thing, because it made them start realizing, hey, Needles does need money, and they're not getting it. You know, when the pipes in the ground are fifty-six years old, you know, you can't, you can't just fix all of it overnight, you know? So, um, I just think there's a lot more work that we need to do.
Thank you for the work. Thank you for the work that you do, right? I'm grateful. On another note, when I met with Dawn Ral, um, a few weeks back, over the healthcare issues, uh, here in, directly in Needles, one of the things that she had brought up to me, which I think is important to demonstrate here, is she had not heard from those individuals on council or in the area over the issue and access to healthcare. It wasn't an issue to her until I had brought it to her in that meeting, am I correct? And so, so I, you know, spent some time walking through the challenges, and walking through the demographics, and trying to walk through, don't, you can't just look at the five thousand people in Needles, it's just the five thousand, look at the other numbers that are happening around it. And, you know, hopefully what that does is it starts more dialogue, but I think it also reminds us of something, is, is, you know, what was said here a few minutes ago by your councilwoman. Someone's gotta say something, right? It doesn't mean you come in and you scream at somebody, and you insult them, and you, and you, and you be mad and angry, it means, hey, you raise your hand, you make a phone call to the appropriate representative, and you, you know, respectfully bring, and, and, and address the issue, and say, here's the challenges that we face, and we may have done it thirty times before, and it fell on deaf ears. But we, maybe it's the thirty-first time that breaks through. So, I know that what we are trying to do as an organization is help through these challenges with whatever natural resources that are available to us as an organization, and we're gonna keep trying to work through it for multiple reasons. One, our members are anchored right here. This is a great area, like, every, everybody loves this area, there's so much that this area brings as far as positive is concerned. Let's stop talking about what we can't do, and let's start talking about what we can do. And that's what we're hopeful that this discussion has sparked, that our knocking on doors, yes, do we want workers to be Teamsters? Of course we do! And we have always wanted that. But we know that in the end, if we help a community, that will benefit in the long run, and workers will know that the advocacy for them has always been in our space. It has been more than one hundred years of it. And that we become a win-win part of the community, when we're partnered with the community in the right way, and we're helping workers at the same time. It becomes more balanced. Our long-term trajectory here is not just self-interest for the members we directly represent, or the ones that we seek to represent, because we're the Teamsters, we think we should represent everybody. We, you know, it's just, we, we love representing workers, and we have for over a hundred years, and we don't care what kind of worker it is. We represent everybody from airline pilots to zookeepers, attorneys, doctors, police officers, we are the most diverse union on the face of the planet, that is a absolute statistical fact, because we've always had this sort of approach. Yes, we're an organization that's had some issues, every organization has, every city has had some issues from time to time, every institution runs into it. Human beings, you make mistakes, but we don't spend too much time harping on that. We need to spend all of our time figuring out how to make things happen, and hopefully, we can all join together to actually make that happen. So I know, I think we have a couple other council members in the room, or other officials in the area that may want to introduce themselves real quick, or people that are a part of the broader community, I think this is a good time to have that, those sorts of introductions. Does anybody want to introduce themselves, or talk about what you're doing in the community?
No. You already heard me.
Yeah, what you do.
I am not quiet, I am not quiet. Hi, Ellen Campbell, City Council, very honored and proud to be representing our city and working together for solutions. I've lived here thirty-eight years, my husband is an attorney here, we have six children, we have nine, uh, we have thirty-seven foster children, we've invested our life in this city, we have an office in Redlands, and we choose to live here. I came from Rolling Hill in Queens, and if you don't know where that is, look it up, that's where I came from. I choose to live here. This is my home, this is my heart, this is where my babies were born, where they could be safe, where they could be free, where we don't lock our, we didn't lock our doors, where people drank their coffee after I went to work, and left me a note saying, hey, I knew you left this Costa Rican coffee bar, maybe I'll see you later. You know, so it's, that's, you know, that's Needles. We have one heartbeat in this town, we're like a sci-fi movie. There's one mother heart under the ground, and she pumps, and she beats, and she reaches out to each one of us, and when one of us bleeds, all of us bleed. And even when we have our differences, or you're mad, or you don't like that person, or whatever, it doesn't matter, when that person has a need, everyone comes. When my son broke both of his legs in Valley View Hospital, would he give me a wheelchair? My son put it on Facebook, and my handicapped son had a wheelchair, potty chair, booster chair, and walker on my front porch before I got home. That's what Needles is all about. We are the wind between each other's wings, under each other's wings. We are the, we are the wind beneath our wings. We hold each other up. We put our wounded in the middle, the way elephants do, and we hold each other up. So this is our opportunity to talk, and I love that we did this, to bring things out, to identify, so, you know, when you can identify the problem, and you live in the problem, that problem is only gonna grow. But when you look at possible solutions, not one, maybe ten, and systematically rule them out, and we go to the solution and live in the solution, the problem may or may not go away, but it always gets smaller. But maybe we can make them go away, now, together, we could do, we could do many, many things in this community together, but we have to do it together. And we have many, many dedicated people, you know, there are people sitting behind me that have been dedicated to this city longer than I have been. And, you know, there are other people in the room, former city council people, other people that work for the city, people who have invested their lives here. This is our home, this is our heart, and, and we want to see our city grow, we want to see good things happen, because we love Needles.
Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you for allowing us to be here. And I mean that, and I, and I also want to thank you, uh, your, your foster care stuff is near and dear to me individually, I appreciate what you're doing for those children, or what you have done for those. Uh, those kids will never forget what you've done to them over the course of their life. So, thank you very much for doing all that good stuff, just, you change people's lives every day. What happens, people don't talk about the good stuff enough, we have a tendency to live in the negative, and I absolutely appreciate all the words you're saying, and we're, we're, I'm a guest here. At the end of the day, I know we called the meeting, but I'm still your guest, and we're gonna try to keep it that way, and we hope that it's always welcome, because we're really just trying to provide the solutions, uh, at least the ones that we think work from our resource. That also means we gotta listen to what other people think might work too. Um, and, and I think that the next step that we should take, let me just double check, make sure I've gone through all my agenda, can my staff tell me if I've missed anything here? Can you cover everything? Um, yeah, I, I think that the, here's where we talk about next steps, and, well, I originally thought about having, you know, this stuff where you write a bunch of stuff off, and start to work on it, maybe that's a little too much real quick. I'm typically fast in the sense that I want to push things, push things, push things, and move them as quickly as I can organizationally, but I also know that sometimes I break things by doing that, so I figured today is a good setting to just say, are we willing to do it? And maybe we start between now and our next meeting, we just start to think of what the organization is called, and, and what the name will be, and what the priorities of the organization will be. And as a result, it's not to say, oh, these people didn't do this, and that person won't let us do that. It's more of focus-driven, and again, you're, you're talking to somebody who, who's part of, been part of building organizations before, and I'm trying to take what I've learned in my time of helping build organizations, helping people build infrastructure around those organizations, so that there's long-lasting results to them, to that organization, and that would be, anytime there's a next step, is, let's be clear in how we're gonna deal with that next step. And so, and again, these things that I'm saying don't have to be done, there's just ideas on what has worked, at least in my setting over the years, to try to suggest what a next step would be. And that would be that the next meeting actually identifies, one, what the name of the organization ultimately is gonna be, and who the shareholders are, right? Like, are you gonna have individuals that are part of affordable housing, or the housing market, or, you know, building housing, or whatever, all of those certain people and individuals need to be part of it? When it comes to the healthcare issue, clearly, you know, we've got, we've got your three most important pieces, your Anthem, your, your Blue Shield, and your county, sitting in the room right now, hearing everything that we're talking about. And I'm hopeful that those three institutions go back to their superiors and recognize that we're building something here, and I certainly hope that they all kind of get moving on the things that I've already talked to their organizations about, because there are absolute solutions on the healthcare side to this. I'll give you an example, that's so easy to, to fix. Let's say you have a particular type of doctor that you need in Needles, because you can see the claims experience drives it, and I see a couple people in the healthcare shaking their head right now, like, because the claims experience in the area that can be extracted out of the data shows that this doctor should be in Needles. You may not be able to convince the doctor to be in Needles, I get that, but what you can do is the darn provider should, should entice that doctor, fine, if they gotta drive out here for days, stay here for two days, then the day they drive out, you're gonna compensate them at the same rate as if they were working the other day. I don't know, maybe that doesn't work, but it's at least a solution, so that you can have somebody physically out here that's obviously handling the population for the needs that are necessary, based on the claims experience is being driven. Instead of the claims experience of driving over into Bullhead and driving, drive, what I mean by the claims experience history and what you're seeing in it, that it, it, it moving away from Needles and moving into other areas, we gotta find those opportunities to anchor it down right here. And that means getting the institutions that can invest in Needles to invest in Needles, and talk to them directly. And the first one that I believe should be able to do that is actually the County of San Bernardino. The County of San Bernardino absolutely needs to invest in Needles, and I've already told that to the chairman, and I've told it to multiple board of supervisors as we speak, they, I mean, I've been in constant contact with them over this subject in the last, like, six, eight months, especially after we knocked on the doors. Because the stories in which we heard knocking on those doors, we're sharing them with those people that make those decisions, whether they're at Blue Shield, or Anthem, or the board of supervisors. They need to hear it, and they don't just need to hear it from those that knock on the doors, they need to hear it from the people that live in those homes. So hopefully, what this does is it creates that space, that those decision-makers start to create the pathways for us to solve the problems. One thing we should get out of here is whether or not we're willing to do it, it seems like people are moving in that direction. Two is, is it makes sense to form an independent, you know, organization, it's not like you gotta spend money or anything like that. Look, this is something where everybody chips in, and we make, we just try to figure out how to make it work. You gotta, it's gotta have name recognition. Obviously, a lot of people come here to this area to vote, to do side-by-sides, there's a lot of value in this area, just in that alone, and you, there's gotta be some opportunity for investment in that space, when it comes to attracting people to, individuals that are willing to invest in it, not just government, but also private business. And so, you know, will that be a discussion in that space? Eh, maybe, maybe not, I guess we'll figure it out later. So this organization just needs to come up with a name, maybe at the next meeting, we'll figure out what that name is, and what the priorities are, is it that three, is there a fourth, is there a fifth? Obviously, I don't think we put too many of them, because it'll create, it'll just create too much of a burden, and just get started on it. What's the timeframe? How fast should we have the follow-up meeting? And then maybe every six months, what we do is, you know, what you do is, you, what my experience has led to me is, is we have the follow-up meeting from those who are interested in being part of the, the nuts and bolts of making it work, and then you do a little bit later, after that work has been, a little bit of work's done, then you do another town hall like this, where you bring everybody together and you say, okay, well, this is the work that got done. Kind of like we're doing today. What we wanted to do is just kind of share with you, this is what we experienced knocking on those doors. I can tell you something, my staff was so moved by the residents of this town, moved that. When we, when we have other meetings in other parts of the county, or other parts of areas we represent, remember, we're, we represent fourteen thousand people throughout the Inland Empire. This story is resonating over and over and over again about, you think you have it bad. Imagine being in a town where you don't have a grocery store, and you don't even have access to healthcare, and it's not to shout someone down, it's more of, hey, you gotta pay attention, man, because there's some people in some really tough situations. And hearing, you know, my staff driving on streets, but maybe hadn't been to Needles in ever, or hadn't been in a long time, or some of our volunteers who had never been, because most of the people we have here were volunteers that came from as far away as I think Pomona, and were willing to come out and just help and knock on doors. Some say, oh, why are you bringing outsiders in? It's not outsiders, it's people wanting to help, it doesn't matter if they're outsiders, and I'm not saying anybody said that, just, we just don't want to get caught up in it. Like, they were moved by the fact that some streets haven't been paved in decades, like, multiple decades. And it was because of the under-resourced that we're talking about, it's not having the ability to put our hands on, you know, that, that sort of infrastructure that was talked about here a few minutes ago. So there's a lot of work that can be done, uh, by, by just getting people that wanna make it happen. Almost the entire team that was out canvassing wanted to be back to see what it turned into. So this is what it's turned into, and they're all here now, and they're just, I, I'm assuming they're just as happy as I am to see the natural sort of transition and transformation. As an organization, our organization's group slogan is transforming the Inland Empire. We truly believe in that, and we have been doing it, by doing these things right here, and having hard discussions. Like, man, I had tribulation, I ran in last night, I woke up at like three, and I'm like, oh, man, someone's gonna yell at me about this, or yell at me about that. Anytime you get into a setting like this, you have no idea what you're gonna hear, you have no idea what's gonna come at you. So, I- So, I struggle with it as an individual, I can imagine so do you. But I think, well, just realize it's important enough for us to get the work done. So, can we commit to coming together and naming this organization? Is there any names anybody has right now at the top of their head that they think might work, or just an idea? Needles Community Coalition, that's a good natural, that's a good natural. Anything else?
Don't forget to talk about our office.
Yeah, we have an office, but we've leased it, you know, someone said that it was tough to get contractors. We've been paying leasing space on it for a year now, and I have not been able to occupy it, because we are struggling on the contractor situation. So, so, you know, I can imagine if you have work that you need to do on your home, that would obviously be far more important than dealing with us opening an office out here. But clearly, that's a microcosm of, you know, on a small scale, of what's probably happening on a larger scale. But again, let's, you know, let's try to tackle these issues, and at least bring the discussion about. So we, we have leased an office, we leased an office last year. Our commitment is to be part of this organization right next to the Rite Aid and the strip mall there. And, you know, our goal is to be there, and to, and to not just represent the members that we have in the area, be closer to them, but also be part of a great community that's expanding and growing. The population center along the Colorado Corolla River is pretty large. When you take in Laughlin, Bullhead, Fort Mojave, Needles, Havasu, Parker, you know, you work your way all the way down into Black, there's a pretty large population center there. And it's almost like, because it's on the edge of California, it's on the edge of Arizona, it's like everybody's kind of forgotten about it, well, we have it. We're like, well, maybe we forgot about it before, but we tend to forget about it now. So, we recognize that, you know, there's a lot of opportunity there for everybody to prosper in it, and let's just have a good robust conversation. So thanks for reminding us, yes, we are trying to open that office, and as soon as we can get the contractors finalized, we'll, we'll have her sign it, and we'll be open. Any other names anybody can think of? How about the next steps? Does the next step sound like a good next step for us to do? How about a timeframe? Has anybody got an idea what that timeframe should be? Because one of the things I don't like to do is walk away from a meeting without having some sort of timeframe so that our organization knows how to handle it and manage it, and start to work in the right direction. I'm assuming you don't wanna walk away from it, oh, maybe this was good, or, and then go, I'm not sure what the follow-up is. Look, is that?
Yesterday.
Yes, today, timeframe, absolutely, it was yesterday. Thirty, sixty, ninety, one, twenty is a follow-up meeting? Any suggestions?
Thirty days.
Thirty days? Okay, so thirty days. So thirty days, smaller meeting, those? How many of you are interested in, let's say, let's say it's called a committee? How many of you are interested in participating in the inner workings of actually making that happen? Okay. And all of you that have raised your hand, are you on, did you sign in? Do we have your information? Great, let me get with my calendar, September is absolutely murder for me. And I have, I'll figure out how to get back out here inside the next thirty days. Hopefully, I can get back out here by the end of September. For us to get a date on the calendar as a follow-up, did you have a question? No, no, sometimes when somebody's doing this, I don't know if they're waiting to... So we'll try to do something inside of thirty days. What that meeting will be, will be just taking those individuals that wanna help form this group, maybe formalize it in a sense of what the name is, and then also formalize the platforms in which it's gonna operate, or the things and goals and objectives in which it's gonna be working towards. I think that that's a good level of expectation out of that. Would everybody agree, disagree? Great, cool, great. And then what we'll do is somewhere by the end of the year before this, because that would be somewhere about the end of September, somewhere before the end of the year, we'll have another follow-up meeting for the community itself to give kind of like a progress report again. I don't know if that's too early, if it's not, you tell me. You, all of you tell me what you think, how that looks with this group.
And I think a thirty-day follow-up would be fantastic, and then we can kind of structure it a little more to see what we want to accomplish in the community.
How about from there? As a, as a follow-up to the project, would it be thirty days from there?
By then, you'll know how many tasks it's gonna take on, and you can handle the tasks. You're gonna have to sign up first.
True, true, good point, good point. I was only trying to look at a window in time. Okay, we'll just approach out of that follow-up meeting, we'll figure out what that timeframe is coming out of that follow-up meeting. All right? Does anything, anybody have anything that they wanna say in closing before I wrap this, this, this meeting up?
I will say one thing, I'll sit here thinking of...
Can you introduce yourself again?
Oh, yeah, Pete Bornell, this is Andy, like, first thing, I took notes here, I took two pages of this on this. Randy, I wanna reaffirm, Randy said earlier, when you approached me, you didn't approach me from a teacher's aspect, you approached me from a, you know, a town last week. And even when I gave that interview, these are people not all from teachers. So I just wanna start off by saying that, and thank you all for, for, for being there. So, I think, I'm here in housing, you know, keeping money in the community, things like that, right? Yeah, all that, I want to circle with that. And I know for, and thank you for some of the history, because, you know, the pandemic, I've been at Needles, I passed through it. But, you know, there's always time to make some changes, right? Are we gonna fix it, and can we improve it, you know, we don't, and there's some of those things. I just wanna say, that ripple effect, most people think that, think that we could do that. I can't convince a doctor to move in here. But I like, I forget everything, the Sunrise Hospital in Las Vegas, the rotation program. I don't know if you know this, maybe you may, and you've been working really with it out there. Sometimes it's part of a larger coalition in Vegas, a lot of power. And I'll just give one example, I can't...
Yes?
One example is, I do a lot of business with labor in Vegas, and we have a lot of doctors in Vegas. We contract with all those coalition of hospitals in Vegas. Just to give you an example, if you respect or single damn on in Vegas, are part of this coalition, how does that affect us? Well, they, through that kind of coalition, they have their own network. It's not, even though they're contracted, though, all the money funnels through that keeping money in the community. And if it gets to Randy eventually, I'd pipe him, oh, like, you know, we can do that sooner than later. I just a little piece of it, but the ripple effect of the housing, the ripple effect of keeping the money in the community, without me going to the line leaders, and we're gonna support whatever, whatever we, right now, it's just access. The rotation thing, if that works, that's Randy, five, whatever. At the very least, it's gonna keep people healthier, have better, better health here, and maybe attract more people to come and live in this community. So I'm liking what I'm hearing, I just wanna make sure that all you're around, I'm not just listening. I'm here because, you know, Randy, and, and you know, all that stuff. I'm committed to coming out, as much as you want me to come out, kind of, we're, we're two, we're two of us here. You know, there's, and there's more of us that are in the shop. I think that tip Randy, I'm gonna take the work out, I do think it starts with the county. And I'm here to listen, and I'm in for the long haul, so that tip Randy, thank you.
Blue Shield!
Yes, and I'm Mark, the DS from Blue Shield of California. The passion that I've heard today is moving. Thank you very much for sharing all of your stories. And Blue Shield of California is committed. I am going to my superiors and going to tell them, give them a briefing of everything that I've heard here, because I am committed to partner and make healthcare affordable for you, and accessible at my level. I might have been for a level, but I'm gonna take it to my superiors with that same passion that I've heard today to make sure that we are partners with you in accessing those providers. So thank you very much for your time and for your attention, and for having me here.
Just very quickly, meetings are very important. I go to community meetings all throughout the Long Island Basin, the Certain Valley, everywhere in San Bernardino County, really, because Don's area is huge. And now with the redistricting, now it includes Needles. So it's really hard for me to see people coming together. I can appreciate, if you call me a field representative, I'm the field representative. Now, get one phone call, okay, I have considerable concerns, will the phone calls keep coming, coming? I keep pushing the information upward. I'm not taking notes, I told my wife, she's gotta take notes for me.
You better note it, guys.
And I live in the desert, you know, we have a, we love living out here. I live in Wonder Valley, on east of Twenty-Nine Palms. You know, I consider an honor to come out here and be here, and be part of this meeting, so. Anybody else wanna, wanna say anything, or introduce themselves, address? So I will close the meeting by, by doing a little promotion of our Teamsters Advantage program. This is a program that we built six years ago, and I'm particularly proud of. Because we've partnered with somewhere around a thousand small businesses now, where, where what we're trying to do with the Small Business Network and the Chambers is, is create an availability to their, their business to our membership. And just, so we have an app that our members have on their phone, and they get a regular update, and they get like a message two or three times a day. It's Taco Tuesday, or, you know, get your oil changed, get the one down the street here in Needles. And we do this constant positive promotion of the small businesses, because it's a commitment that our organization has to the community in a sense of reminding people to stay local, and to connect to your, not just your local politics, but your civic responsibility and your local small business owner. Because, you know, small business is probably the biggest struggle for anybody that's out there when they're operating. Obviously, working for others, sometimes there's benefits in it. But man, when it's all on your back, and you're the one that's gotta, no matter what, carry the, carry the mud through the situation, you know, it's, it's gotta be very tough and challenging. And so we wanna always be part of that. The partnership that we have with more than a thousand of those small businesses, we're very proud of it. We've anchored down in this area between Needles, Fort Mojave, a little bit in Havasu, not so much. We're trying to anchor down a lot of that here and build that free advertising. Look, it's, there's, there's no hook in it. I know sometimes a small business, it goes, whoa, there's gotta be something. Well, it's simply whatever discount you can offer, just offer it to our members exclusively, that they get a gambling card in, and we wanna encourage our members to shop with you, because your money is staying, more of your money is staying local than it is in any other setting. Going to a small business, more of it stays local than it does if you go to Walmart. More of it stays local than if you go to Home Depot. More of it stays local if you go to, you know, some of these big corporations, they're getting huge tax breaks on the backside, and small business is not getting it. And it's not fair to them, so we're just trying to do what little we can to encourage that. And so if you have small businesses, or know small businesses, that wanna be part of that network, you know, please share it. We, we think it's a great partnership that we've had over a long period of time. It's continuing to grow year by year. Even during COVID, like, some of those small businesses, we were struggling, you know, we were, hey, if you want, if you want your service, if you want, uh, be able to pick it up, or, you know, three, four, or five messages, messages a day, telling our members, make sure you shop here, versus maybe going to Del Taco, or Taco Bell, or Carl's Jr., or something. So I just, that's my plug, it's one of those programs that we kind of helped build from scratch, and just really, really enjoy the benefits, and seeing all the great stories that come out of our members saving a little bit of money, and the local business benefiting as a result of that network. Mark, Ralph, these are two representatives, I don't know if there's anything you wanna say on it? Mark, is there anything you wanna say, seeing that you're part of the Chamber of Commerce here?
So, shopping local, to his point. Just look it up for yourself, I will give you the stats. Look up shop local, and how much of the taxes come back to the community versus if they go through a major change? It's like a sixty, forty split, and local businesses put more tax base back in your local community. Does everybody use their card the way they should? Absolutely not. Because how many have a AAA card in their pocket right now? How many times have we used that discount? Do you know how many discounts you give with AAA? I know you use them. Think if you use those every day. If you got ten dollars, if you buy a hundred, if you got four people, you do a dinner, it's a hundred bucks. All right, that's around that. You take ten percent off, there's ten dollars. If you go out to dinner twice a month, there's twenty bucks. Do the math. Like Starbucks, Beth, Beth should be CEO. But she probably has a lot of rewards on her Starbucks app.
Buy a sword.
But that's what Teamsters Advantage is about. We want our members to be able to do that. We also have an associate program. And I probably don't believe we'll let Rob talk about that, because he's been standing here just as long as I have. But tell him, tell him about the associate program.
Associate Management Program is an opportunity to, if you need it, piggyback on top of Teamsters, uh, benefits that we have, through our healthcare programs. Yes. And Teamsters Management, we have to get that, this is the number one thing. That was we have that, that we need. It's a real important factor, there's really, we have some of those things that, I don't know if we have any answers to the question. Another thing we want to add is, rest in my good judgment, to the residents here of Needles, talk to your neighbors, talk to your folks down the street, of what we're trying to do here as a group, get them involved, help them understand what we're trying to do, and see what we can bring to this ground, to the double, what we have here today. Uh, because it takes a community to build what we're trying to help the community with. So hopefully, you'll take that back to your neighbors, to your social groups, and, and talk about it, and see what we can all together make this.
Mark?
So, off topic, I came to Needles, it probably did a lot of great work. And when I came here, the perception from describing it was very quiet, not a big happening town. And I don't mean it with disrespect, but I have been working with everyone in this town to some degree, and I've talked to a lot of people. But one thing that I have found out is, it's a very well-rooted community. No matter what the issues are, everybody comes back to, I live here, and we've heard that all day today. And people go to the high school baseball game, they go to the football game. There's a true love in this town, and I, I've come to know that, and I've talked to just about as many people as I can possibly talk to. I've talked to people that might not like other people, but it always comes back to one thing, the passion for this town is amazing. And I just wanted to throw that in there, because even though there's differences, and there's things that people wanna complain about, and they want to beg, they still care. You know, there's people in this room that came in here today on a Saturday, and they wanted to voice their opinion. They didn't have to get up and get dressed and come down, they did it because they care about their children. And that's the one thing that I noticed.
Mark? So in closing, a couple of observations. Seeing, seeing the exchange and the information, and everybody's going to wanting to do something, is inspiring, and it's, it's much appreciated, and we appreciate you welcoming us into, welcoming us into your town. And I'll tell you a little story that you reminded me of a minute ago, is when we were canvassing back in May, the bus that was driving around town, like, I can't count how many times we got called, can you bring the bus over here? Can you bring the bus over? And, and, and so the bus was driving all back and forth, because this guy was a retired teacher, and this uncle was, ah, yeah, I wanna, I wanna check out the bus, I wanna get on the bus. And we had so much fun with the community in that exchange. And we found all these commonalities that we never would have known if we hadn't just knocked on some doors. And so, we're gonna do some more knocking on the doors in the future. Our, our organization has been doing what we call canvassing for about four years now, five years now. We're doing it... What's that? Yes, we'll bring the bus back. What we wanna do is, we actually wanna do a kid-friendly sort of bus trip with it, and we're trying to figure out what works, that we can get the kids on the bus, and get them to take you somewhere and have a good time, and come back. And my bus, our bus driver is like, you know, he's like, Randy, you're killing me, you know, anyway. Our bus would have been here today, but we had another function going on in LA today, that, something else grounded in the communities, some other work we're doing. My point is to the canvassing is, we're actually knocking on doors all over the country right now, from coast to coast, all through North America. And we're finding this, these same things happening in a lot of places, because unfortunately, socially, we distance ourselves from one another. And it's been a mistake. And hopefully, what, as this did, it's just gets talking a little bit better and trying to find solutions. So, we appreciate you welcoming us with open arms. I can tell you that all the exchanges we had on the doors were like ninety-five percent of them were positive. Hey, thanks for being here. You know, some people, you know, talked a little too much, we had to try to run away from the door. You know, I say that jokingly, but, you know, people were friendly, people wanted to talk about what was going on, people were appreciative that there was some good discussion. And we're just as appreciative that people were willing to share their stories, and share, and trying to find solutions. And with that, we'll bring the meeting to a close. So, a round of applause for all of the city...